All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. It's 2:00 and it's time to have this very interesting discussion on the extraordinary circumstances relating to impact fees. And so Sherri, tell us all about impact fees.
I know you're excited about this afternoon.
I came back from lunch just for this meeting.
I know, I know. Hope you had a big lunch, you know, so nice and calm. So let me just tell you who I have at the table with me. You know, Robin Lawrence, our Division Director in OFMB over Financial Management. Derek Moore is our Impact Fee Manager. And our consultant is Naljyn Camp, and she's with Ben Chix, which was formerly known as Tindell Oliver. So she was here the last time we updated the study, so she'll be here today. And I'm going to kick it off to Derek to give us some opening comments and then we'll turn it over.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Baker. Just wanted to sort of outline this process that we go through to get the impact fee rates updated. And so I'm just going to go through again the process that we go through to get this done. And then I will toss it over to Ms. Camp to do the presentation. Article 13 under the Uniform Land Development Code requires biennial updates of the fees. And so every two years, we have to, we're required to come before you all to get those rates updated. Recent law, actually last June, was passed to change that to quadrennial, quadrennial. So every four years, we'll be required after this study is completed and rates implemented. Every four years, we'll actually come back to you all to update our rates. The consultant back early last year, we secured the consultant to start the study. And so they came on board. And then we began to collect data from the departments, departments. We went back and forth, providing them, providing a variety of information so that we could compile the, so the consultant could compile the study. That was done. Then the next step was the draft report was provided. The departments received that report. They reviewed it, provided some feedback. And once they, once they completed that stage, then we went on to actually meeting with the Impact Fee Review Committee. That committee was selected and presented to you all. You all approved that committee. It's a seven-member committee. And we have individuals, at least the chair is here today, Mr. Ecclestone, he's here today representing the committee. And he's been on that committee almost since the very inception of impact fees. And so he's very versed and well, well versed in the information and the knowledge about the impact fees and the process that we go through. We also on that committee have an attorney, Mr. Harvey, from up in the Palm Beach Gardens area. He's the vice chair, Mr. Worley, a contractor, general contractor, and Mr. Ecclestone, of course, is a developer. Mr. Godley, Mr. Lawrence Garden, and Ms. Anowski and Mr. Godley. They are vice mayors in their respective cities, Loxahatchie Groves, Haverhill, and the town of South Palm Beach. And so the committee was a very well-rounded committee, and they did an excellent job of vetting this process. We met about five times over a period of a couple of months and met a total of about 15 hours to go through the process of vetting the study. And we, before we did each one of those meetings, we actually sent out emails. Planning, zoning, and building has a list of emails of stakeholders and other individuals that they send, send emails out to on a regular basis. And so we used that list to get the word out that we were actually having these meetings. And we had a, we had a pretty good response either through WebEx, because we made it available through WebEx. So if you couldn't attend in person, you could attend via WebEx. And so we had some stakeholders that actually came to the meetings and made some comments, asked some questions. The consultant took in those questions and comments, and we made some changes to the report based upon the Impact Fee Review Committee's input, as well as those stakeholders that appeared at the meeting. Their job, the Impact Fee Review Committee, their primary role is to vet the study, to make sure that the methodology is sound methodology and that the validity and assumptions that are actually utilized were sound. And they unanimously endorsed the report with a couple of exceptions, and Ms. Camp will get into those. One had to do with public buildings, including jails and public buildings, and the other having to do with including land and parks and recreation. And again, again, Ms. Camp will get into that. Additionally, the Impact Fee Review Committee supported the extraordinary circumstances because it provides the most flexibility in the decision on the rates, but not for the purposes of increasing the rates. They wanted to make sure that it was clear that they, they are not necessarily supporting an increase above 50% on the rates, but they were supportive of extraordinary circumstances for some of the other issues related to the new House bill or the legislation that was passed. One of those were proportionality. Maintaining proportionality is a big issue as well, above and beyond the 50% issue. And again, Ms. Camp will address that in her presentation as well. Once we finished that process, then we have to present the report, the changes that we're recommending to the ULDC, to, to the Land Development Regulation Commission. And they will then determine, do consistency determination, again, just making sure that the changes that we're making are consistent with the Uniform Land Development Code. Then after we finish there, we present the report to you all, and you all finally make the final decision on whether or not you want to, whatever decision you want to make in terms of changing the rates or not. We have, because this process, the extraordinary circumstances require two workshops, that is why we're here today. And we have to do, again, two workshops to consider extraordinary circumstances. And this has not been a part of the process in the past. This is an outgrowth from the legislation that was passed last summer. And so that is why we're here today. Our next steps will be to do first and second hearing. And in those first and second hearings, there is, in lies where you all will make the final decision on what to do with the rates. Our plan at this point is to have that, is to have the second workshop on August 30th and the first public hearing also later that day on August 30th. And then the second hearing, September 13th, again, unless something changes that schedule, that is the plan at this point. Once that second hearing is completed and the rates are adopted, we would then have 90 days, we'll have approximately, we have to give notice to the public 90 days prior to implementing those new rates. And so there will be additional time for those developers and builders to prepare for the new rates that will, that will be implemented. We finally believe that that will take place, again, if there are no changes in the schedule, in early next year, 2023. And that will complete us having updated our rates within the appropriate time. Again, our rates are required to be the most, are supposed to be dependent upon the most recent and localized data. And so that is why we have to do this periodically. And now it will be every four years. Having said all of that, I will now turn it over to Ms. Camp to do her presentation.
Good afternoon. Naljyn Camp with Benish. The presentation is organized in terms of background, going through the technical study and then the extraordinary circumstances and next steps. In terms of the background, Palm Beach County is one of the larger counties and continuing to grow and is experiencing some of the highest residential permits among the 67 counties. To address that, the county implemented impact fees in 1980s, and they were last updated in 2018. Most of the fees at the time were not really adopted, so that most of the fees are really based on a 2012 study, and I'll go over them. But so in terms of the date of the data, they are more than 10 years old data. So study focus area are those seven service areas. And as you know, impact fees are by definition are a one-time capital charge to new development. They cover the cost of new capital facilities, and they help implement the capital improvement plans. Their purpose is really to maintain the level of service. They calculate the cost. They are most needed when there are high growth levels and limited alternative funding. The study is using a consumption-based methodology, which has been your adopted methodology for a long time. It's very common in Florida. It charges new growth for the value of the infrastructure that it is consuming. And so the fees are calculated at a rate that they cannot generate sufficient revenues to cover existing deficiencies. And that's one of the legal requirements that we cannot charge new development for existing deficiencies. The study itself establishes the maximum technically calculated fees, but the board has the option to adopt those at a reduced level. And the study uses the methodology approved by the Impact Fee Review Committee in 2019 with a couple of changes that we'll point out. So in terms of legal requirements, really, the Impact Fee Act passed in 2006. Before that, it was primarily driven by case law. And some of the key items is that it requires that the rates be based on most recent and localized data. So again, at this point, your rates for the, most of the fees are based on at least 10 years old data. And it has notice requirements. If there's any action challenging the fee, the government now has the burden of showing that their fees are correct. And then there's some other requirements, like the collection of building permit and so on. So last year, House Bill 337 passed, and it put some limits on the fee increases. So really, if it can, fees cannot be increased more than 50%, and that has to be done over four installments. And then cannot be increased more than every four years. If however, the local governments can demonstrate extraordinary circumstances, then they can be increased more than that. And that requires two public workshops discussing those circumstances and a two-thirds of the governing body voting for it. Now, once we started, once this act passed and we started implementing it with different jurisdictions, some of the unintended consequences came out. And one of them is that this 50%, because of the changes to the data and because of the changes to demand component, not all categories increases by the same percentage. So if we kept everything at 50, the proportionality between land uses is lost, and that's one of the legal requirements. So it's sort of conflicting. If you do one, then you are violating the other legal requirement. If, you know, if we have to pick the highest land use and do that, we are ending up lowering the fees, which has a big revenue implications. So one of the reasons jurisdictions consider using extraordinary circumstance to give themselves the flexibility to adopt at whatever level they want, and they may adopt the fee at a rate that most land users don't increase more than, say, 30%, but one may increase more than 50% because of changes to the demand. So I'll go over it more too, so, but that's just one aspect of it. The basic impact fee formula looks at the cost to add capacity, so that's really the value of the capital assets the county built up to this point. From that, we look at how those, that infrastructure is being funded from the, in terms of the other revenue sources. So to the extent that a county is using other taxes, a portion will come from new development, so we give a credit for it, so that we are not charging him twice, once through the impact fee and once through the tax. So this net cost gets multiplied by demand, and that's measured in terms of travel for transportation, student generation rate for schools, and then the population for other fees. So this slide shows the summary of calculated fees. So for a single-family, 2,000-square-foot home, the total calculated fee would be about $19,000. Right now, it's about $13,000. And then there's some representative land uses, you know, industrial office, and you can kind of see what they would be. On the non-residential side, the larger component is transportation. And on the residential, it's schools, then the transportation and parks. So this chart shows what it would be with the maximum allowable impact fee. So basically, increasing everything no more than 50%. So that would result in a total of about $16,700 or so compared to the current total of $13,000 for a mid-sized home. In terms of the technical study, there are several components that we go through, and I'll do that in each thing. But basically, we start with inventory, look at the level of service, then go through the cost, credit, and demand components. So for public buildings, there's, there are about, there's about six and a half million total square feet of facilities, a combination of facilities, office, courthouse, jail, industrial, support, and so on, and about 620 acres of land, those are in your inventory. And the buildings, the costs range depending on type of structure. It's anywhere from $55 per square foot to $400. And the land is estimated about $200,000 per acre. For all the building unit costs, we review anything that the county builds or has any bids. We looked at the insured values of the existing buildings, and then we supplemented that from data from other jurisdictions for the same type of facilities. In the case of land, again, similarly, anything that the county bought, or if it has any appraisals, those were reviewed, as well as value of the parcels, were currently owned parcels. And in addition, we looked at vacant land sales and values by area, by size throughout the county, and talked to the departments where they like, they are likely to buy their next purchase. So in each of the fee categories, the same analysis was conducted to determine the unit So overall, the total asset value, total cost component is about $1.7 or almost $8 billion. That represents the investment the community made up to this point into public buildings' infrastructure. So in terms of per person, that ends up being about $1,100. So you know, so that's again, for each person, this county invests about $1,100 into public buildings facility. Credit component looks at other revenue sources being used. So there's ad valorem, sales tax grants, and also the debt service related to capacity projects. So we recognize a credit for all those. And that credit taken out of the cost gives us the net cost, which is about $965 per And then that multiply by persons per unit gives us the final fee. So this chart shows that the current fee, which was 2012, based on the 2012 study, and at the time, it was adopted at 27%. And then full calculated fee is at, in the middle, it's about $1,570 per, for a single family, or a 2,000-square-foot in your case. And then the maximum allowable, which is 50% higher than the current fee, is about 334 again for a 2,000-square-foot home. And then we have some comparison from other jurisdictions. Now, in the case of public buildings, it's a little difficult to do this comparison because your public buildings fee includes jail and law enforcement, sheriff's buildings. In the case of some of the other counties, they have those as separate fees. So they have a public buildings fee, which is more like the administrative plans, maintenance buildings, and so on, but a separate law enforcement fee and separate correctional facility fee. So that's why this is, it's hard to get an apples-to-apples comparison, and that's why those fees are lower in some of these other jurisdictions. But you're going to see the opposite in the law enforcement, where yours includes only vehicles, but theirs include buildings also, so theirs is a lot higher. So those two, just kind of keep in mind kind of thing. And the driving force for this increase is really, when we updated the study in 2019, we realized that a large portion of the inventory wasn't included previously. So the inventory itself had a better recognition in the fee, because at the time, we actually lowered the unit costs. And when we compare the 22 figures to 2019, the single-family increase is only about 20%. So because these were not updated in 2019, and they are adopted at 27%, that's why there's such a large gap between what's adopted and calculated. So that's the situation where, you know, new, new growth is being subsidized for this facility through other taxes and so on. Now, in our meetings with the Impact Fee Review Committee, they recommended removing the jail facilities. If we do that, then the fee is reduced about 30%. So instead of, for example, 2,000-square-foot home being $1,570, it'd be like $1,000, almost Fire rescue, there are about 43 fire stations and about 297,000 square feet, 180 acres of land. We also look at the vehicles and equipment. So the, and land value is estimated at $325,000 per acre, and the buildings are 525 per square foot. So the total asset value ends up being about $315 million. That divided by population is about 24, or incidents, I'm sorry, 2,400 per incident. On the credit side, there is ad valorem contributions and funding for capacity projects. So then net cost ends up being about $2,200. And that cost multiply by incidents per unit of each land use gives us the final fee schedule. So this fee was adopted at 2018, based on the data at 95%. And the primary reason for the increase is the large increases in cost. The fire stations, the county built one for 500. There's another one ongoing for 600 per square foot. The cost increases that they are seeing has been pretty significant. So the cost is the driving factor for the increase here. And again, maximum allowable would be for a 2,000-square-foot would be about 414. And then you see the rates in some of the adopted rates in some of the other jurisdictions, and they range anywhere from $350 to about $670 or so for a 2,000-square-foot home. Law enforcement, the level of service measured in terms of officers per population. And then we have a cost, like vehicle and equipment cost per officer. And again, in Palm Beach County's law enforcement fee, only the vehicles and equipment are included, not the buildings. Buildings already accounted for in the public buildings fee. So the cost per resident ends up being about almost $160. And then we subtract the credit from that. So the net cost is about $118. And the total fee ends up being 222 calculated. Current adopted fee is based on 2012 study again. It is a relatively small fee, but it would be kept below the calculated level. And again, when you look at other jurisdictions, theirs is higher. And again, in their case, the buildings are also included in their fee, so that's the Library facilities, the county has 18 libraries with about 405,000 square feet of space and 85 acres of land. In addition, there's collection and materials. And the unit cost, land is estimated at $100,000 per acre, and buildings are about 400,000, I mean, 400 per square foot for libraries and 175 per square foot for the annexed building. So the total asset value ends up being about almost $200 million. That divided by population gives us a cost per resident of almost $200. There's other, other funding sources for libraries as ad valorem taxes, as well as the debt service. So when we subtract the credit, net cost is about $121. And that multiply by persons per housing unit gives us the final fee. Library impact fees are charged only to residential land uses. So 2,000-square-foot home would be about 311, and that's less than 50% increase, so it would be same for the maximum allowable. Parks and Recreation. So the level of service is measured in terms of acres per thousand population. Your achieved level of service is slightly above the adopted level of service standard. That's in your comp plan. And achieved level of service measures the investment by the community, and the standard tells us the intentions going forward, how much the county is likely to provide. So we use the lower of the two. If we haven't achieved it, we can charge them for the standard. And if there's no intention of continuing with the achieved level, then we don't want to charge the new development. So we use the adopted level of service standard in this case. In terms of land, county made the decision not to charge for beach land because there's, it's unlikely that you'll be purchasing any more of those, and they are very expensive. So the, the land is based on regional and district parks. And all, in addition, there's the recreational facility values, park development values. So overall, the land and facility value per resident ended up being $995 per person. And credit, again, ad valorem, sales tax, grants, and also debt service are used for capacity projects for parks and recreation. So when those are subtracted, the net cost ends up being about $950 or so. And then that multiply by persons per housing unit gives us the fee, just like libraries, parks also are charged only to residential land users. So the fee increases, the single-family 2,000 would be about $2,300. The primary reason for that increase is the inclusion of land value that was not included in the last study. At the time, I think the county thought they would not be purchasing land, but now there are, there is a need to purchase land, so it's included back in. And then when you look at the other jurisdictions, again, a single-family home is ranging anywhere from 520 to 3,600. And we have a few more counties here also anywhere ranging from 1,700 to 4,200. And in addition to the rate update, there's also an update of the benefit districts. So right now, the Parks Impact Fee has three benefit districts. And when we look at the boundaries, location of the existing parks, impact fee revenues, expenditures in each one, and discuss the visitation data with the department, it became apparent that making it two districts will, will be more reasonable. It will align better in terms of revenues and expenditures. It also shows that there's enough of the parks in each district, and there's visitation, the radius that the parks attract from are within those distances. So that's the proposed change to the benefit district. So that basically is where the collection, collected impact fees can be spent. And then Impact Fee Review Committee made a recommendation to exclude all land, kind of like the last study. So if that were to be, just, I guess, if, if we were to exclude all of the land, then the rates go from, for, for example, for 2,000-square-foot home, from $2,300 to about $1,500. And again, with the maximum allowable, that'd be about $1,300. Schools, so the inventory includes almost 200 schools. And the facility cost is really estimated based on the school district's capital plan is what they programmed for the new schools. And again, these were the schools that they are, they are programming. And altogether, it's about, ending up being about almost $34,000 per station. So in addition to impact fees, they also use ad valorem funding, some from state contributions, and then also debt service. So we recognize a credit for these. So when we subtract that, the net cost per student ends up being about $28,000. That cost multiply by the students per each residential category gives us the full fee. So that's about, ranging from 7,300, or actually 6,400 to 8, 8,300 or 8,700, depending on the tier. And then you can see the maximum allowable would be, in some cases, it would cap that calculated fee, but in some cases, calculated fee is less than 50% increase. And then these three slides give you a comparison in each of them. And in the previous slides too, too, we actually did that, but we showed the date of their last update, so you can see the, how all the studies were. Adoption percentage, that was that policy decision. And then adopted rates, and then the rate's at hundred percent. So this first set of counties is ranging from twenty-four-hundred to fifty-four-hundred as far as their hundred percent rates. And then the next set is about fifty-four-hundred to eighty-nine, and that's where your adopted and calculated rates would be. And then the last set is anywhere from nine-thousand to almost thirteen-thousand. Transportation. Transportation formula works a little differently, so I kind of go over it really quickly. We start with the cost of one lane mile, that's five-point-six-million, and that lane carries a capacity of fourteen-thousand. So five-point-six divided by fourteen gives us the cost per vehicle miles of capacity, four-hundred. So every time a car is added to the roadway system, for them to travel one mile, it costs four-hundred dollars of transportation infrastructure. That's kind of what it's saying. Average home travels seventeen vehicle miles daily, so those two multiply gives us the total cost, about sixty-seven-hundred. And then we take the credit, subtract the credit of eight-hundred, and then the net fee is about fifty-nine-hundred. So that's kind of just, give you a sense of the formula. The demand side is really measured in terms of how many trips each land use take daily, how long those trips are, and how many of them are new trips. So if somebody is going from home to office and stop at the gas station, we don't charge the gas station for that trip because it was on the way, and it wasn't because of them. So the data behind those is the National Institute of Transportation Engineers Handbook, which has all the trip data, and we are using the most recent edition, eleventh edition. We supplement that with studies conducted throughout Florida at actual sites, and that gives us data about all three variables. And then we also supplement that with the regional travel demand model. Cost component, just like the other studies, we look at any projects completed in the county. Those are averaging about three-and-a-half-million per lane mile, just the cost, construction cost. And then we look at other jurisdictions throughout Florida, and they are averaging about three-point-seven. So it's very consistent. This chart is kind of showing the co, cost increases over time, and you can see your twenty-twelve study, I don't have a pointer here, but if you can see it, twenty-twelve study was right at the bottom of the recession, so costs were decreasing. So that was how it was calculated. And then twenty-nineteen, we, or eighteen, we were looking at increasing costs, and then since then, the costs continued to increase. So overall, cost per lane mile also includes costs related to right-of-way design and construction and engineering. So it ends up being about five-point-six-million for the county and state roads combined. On the credit component, the primary credit is coming from the state spending. Most of the county funding is for, fuel taxes are used, being used for operations and maintenance. And then road impact fees are being used for capacity, of course. So when we look at it, on an annual basis, there's about forty-two-million-dollar investment into transportation. It's only one-point-seven-million from the county side, and the rest is state investment. So we recognize a credit for that entire amount. The one question with the transportation that we get is that, you know, it has a dedicated revenue source in terms of fuel taxes, so why are we always in need of additional funding? And it's usually a significant amount. And one reason for that is, as you know, fuel taxes are on a per-gallon basis, and local pennies are not allowed to be indexed. So state taxes are indexed, but not local. All other revenue sources, because they are a percentage, they are automatically indexed as the purchase price goes up. So what's happening is, over time, between the fuel efficiency and inflation, a penny of a fuel tax, say in mid-nineties, is only worth about half of its value. So you have an infrastructure type that the costs are increasing, and its dedicated revenue source is losing ground. So that gap, that funding gap is growing over time. So that's kind of why it's so challenging to fund transportation. And the calculated impact fee ends up being about fifty-nine-hundred. And here you can see, in twenty-eighteen, the county's fee for a mid-sized home was about seventy-three-hundred. At the time, right, right before you were getting ready to adopt it, we had a new data come that indicated a reduction, and county decided to reduce the rates at the time. And in fact, like, kept the schedule that was the lower of the two. So basically, you have a very conservative schedule in terms of revenue generation. So now we are increasing some compared to that. And, and again, the increases are so relatively modest. The maximum allowable, they are less than fifty percent for most of the land uses. But we do have a couple land uses that are over fifty percent. So that's one of the reasons why going the extraordinary circumstances would give you the flexibility to adopt this at whatever rate you want, and not worry about one land use, you know, conflicting with the other ones. And then this chart shows a comparison to other jurisdictions, and you can see, again, we've tried to put the study date, adoption percentage, anywhere from four-hundred-thirty at Broward County to ninety-eight-hundred in Miami Dade. Broward County's is really not an active impact fee. They have an impact fee in the books, but they usually use concurrency, and they don't use that fee. It's a very old fee. We don't have a backup. So it's, it's probably actually better not to include, just because they are so close to you. We did include them, but it's, it's not being used, just for your, so you know. Again, this is showing the summary of all fees for a few land uses. Altogether, when calculated fee ends up being about nineteen-thousand compared to the current adopted fee of thirteen-thousand. And if we apply the fifty percent, then it's about sixteen-thousand, seven-hundred-fifty. In terms of the extraordinary circumstances, again, one of them is that you are a very large county continuing to grow. You are experiencing significant growth. You are ranked seventh out of sixty-seven counties in terms of permitting levels. So that kind of puts pressure on all the facilities. This charge, chart is showing, this is from the long, travel demand model. They are projecting through twenty-four, forty-five, an increase of travel of about thirty-five percent, but only eight percent increase in lane miles. So that's, again, suggests increased congestion, sign of growth. Other key factor is that the current fees are based anywhere from eight to ten years-old data, where we see a lot of fluctuations since then. And the technical study suggests that, at least for some land uses, the fees are increasing more than fifty percent. And again, they are not increasing nice and neat at where you just put a fifty percent and not lose the proportionality. So that's a big concern in terms of legal requirements. So when we look at the revenues and what projects the departments have, in the case of public buildings and law enforcement, really, the full calculated rates are about, would generate about ten-million. Maximum allowable rate would generate two-and-a-half-million per year. There are several projects. The Sheriff's Shooting Range, Airport Center Building, Atlantic Commons Site, Main Court Expansion. So the, all of these type of projects are eligible for impact fee funding. In the case of fire rescue, the full calculated rates would generate about one-point-three-million a year, and maximum allowable more like point-nine-million per year. And there are several stations that they are planning to build. These are some examples, and they have additional stations as well, and they are ranging anywhere from six to seven-and-a-half-million per station. Libraries, they would generate a little less than a million a year. And there are plans to build the Canyon Ranch Library, and its estimated cost is about twen, twenty-million, twenty-and-a-half. On the side of parks, the full calculated rates would generate about eight-million, maximum allowable more like four-and-a-half-million per year. And they have a pretty large list of projects as well. You can see some examples here. Schools, the full calculated rates would generate thirty-two-million, maximum allowable about twenty-eight-million. And again, they have several schools that are programmed to be built or planned to be built. And they range anywhere from thirty-million for elementary to ninety, over ninety-million for high schools. Transportation, full, full calculated rates would generate about twenty-four-million, and, and that's pretty much the same as maximum allowable, since their increase is less than fifty percent. And again, there's a long list of projects that are eligible to be funded with the, with the impact fees. In terms of next steps, we are here to get your input. And like Mr. Moore explained, there'll be another workshop on extraordinary circumstances from a legal perspective. And then I think it will come back to the board for the actual rate discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Ms., Ms. Kemp. Commissioners, we are, we have departmental, department representatives, representatives here today. And so if you have any questions that get down into the weeds, that we might need them to come and answer questions, they're here as well today, and so they can answer your questions. We're available for answering any questions that you might have at, at this time.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that very thorough presentation. I'm looking for lights. I have my first light, Vice Mayor Weiss.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation this afternoon. Can you explain why the land values are different between the different uses, whether it's for a fire station or a public building?
Yes. So what we did throughout the process is looked at type of land that each service area is using. For example, in the case of libraries, even government buildings, there's more flexibility. Fire needs to be easily accessible to major roads, the stations, and so on. We also looked at where there are plans to build or buy land next. So, you know, in which area of the county, each department is likely to purchase their next piece of land. So depending on the location, that made a difference as well. So those are the primary, I think, the differentiators, why it differs from one to another.
I mean, they're pretty substantial. I mean, from two-hundred-thousand to over three-hundred-thousand dollars an acre.
Right. Right. Again, that's a function of what they purchased in the past, what they are likely to purchase in the future, and where. So closer to the coast, or close more urban areas, more expensive. If they are building more toward the east-western part, tends to be more affordable.
And then, and then why with fire rescue, do you use a, a per-incident cost versus law enforcement using, based on population?
So in the case of law enforcement, it's difficult, more difficult to make the connection between the incidents in the sense that somebody may call for a crime, but the crime may not be happening at that location. They see something and they call. Incidents tend to be more directly related. We also done fires, impact fees based on population, but that was one of the, also the direction from the Impact Fee Review Committee that for fire, they preferred incidents. Either one is, been used pretty equally. Like, when we look at jurisdictions, almost half uses incidents, other half uses population.
Okay. And then is there any differences, when you do a study, any differences between part-time and full-time residency?
We look at seasonal population, and we convert that to full-time equivalent. Like we say, they, these people are living here less than six months, so count them as forty percent. We also look at people coming in and out of the, like, the employees coming in and out, or visitors, and convert all that to full-time equivalent at each land use when we do our final calculation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. I'm not entirely comfortable using the incident calculation for fire rescue impact fees, mainly because I think population is better. I think the incidents tended, Chief could probably tell us, tend to be concentrated in certain parts of the county, majority of them anyhow. Question, Ms. Baker, or somebody from Parks and Recreation? Fifteen-million-dollar Sandsbury Way property, where's that property?
That was Parks. Mr. Hamilton?
He's coming.
He's coming.
Good afternoon. Bob Hamilton, Parks and Recreation. Sandsbury Way property is just north of King's Academy on Belvedere Road and Sandsbury Way Drive.
What corner? Because...
Just to the, just to the, directly to the north, the King's Academy site. There's undeveloped land, the total of ninety-plus acres.
It's the east side of...
East side of Sandsbury Way, correct.
...way, just south of Okeechobee. It is the, it's after you pass that home development, I forgot the name of it. But there's a development right on that corner that you turn into. Just past that is the acreage. We sometimes allow during the fair, we partner with the fair and allow them to park on that, some of that land. A lot of it is a bit softer, so you cannot use it. So that is one of the areas that we have identified and has been in our inventory.
Correct.
For a while. So it is an area that we will eventually develop.
Okay. Just didn't know about that one. Now, Mr. Moore, the, the impact fee committee, who, who made up that committee?
That committee is usually done by nominations, various individuals nominate, and then we prepare as a normal course, put those together, background, go through ethics training, and we present those to you all in a board, as, as a board item. And then you all make the determination as to whether they're, they're acceptable to go on that committee or not.
Okay. Could you remind me who is on the committee?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ecclestone, he's sitting there. He's the chair of the committee. And in your, in your packet, where they did, they actually provide a report. The Impact Fee Review Committee provides, provides a report. And at the, the last page in that report, Mr. Ecclestone, again, who's there, Mr. Harvey, who is from up in Commissioner Marino's area, I believe, Mr. Worley, who's been on there a number of years, he's a general contractor, Mr. Goddard, who's the Vice Mayor of Town of South, South Palm Beach, he's a, he's the Vice Mayor, again, there, Mr. Lawrence Garden, who's the Vice Mayor of Havahill, and the present sitting of League of Cities President, Ms. Laura Danowski, who's a Councilwoman and Vice Mayor up at Locksahatchie Groves. And then finally, Mr. Darnell Gardner, who's the at-large member, who's a general contractor and a real estate broker.
Okay. And I think back a few years ago, when we gave direction on that, the Association of General Contractors and the Realtors Association, we asked that they be included. Were they, did they have representatives on the committee?
We, I'm not sure if any of those individuals are specifically on that, you know, a part of that organization, but we did reach out to them, and we made sure that they were made aware that the meetings were taking place. And they appeared and spoke at the meetings on a couple of, on a couple of occasions and gave their input. And so they were very involved in the process.
Okay. I, it was two years ago when the legislation was passed, was part of the, the conversations in Tallahassee with the Florida Home Builders Association and the Executive Committee of the County Association and the home builders. We worked together to hammer out this, this negotiated deal with the hopes that the Home Builders Association wouldn't keep coming after us every year with legislation related to impact fees. I don't think, you know, the, the, I forget what the annual percentage increase, up to fifty percent, was the compromise. The extraordinary circumstances was just thrown in there as, as a backup. I don't think it was really the intent to utilize that mechanism. I'm not comfortable with the projections that are presented before us today. I think it exacerbates the home affordability crisis that we're facing, and it's ill-timed. And I know that we've got infrastructure needs, and I know we've got to figure out a way to pay for those, and, but I, I think increasing the impact fees this way... a way to pay for those, and, but I think increasing the impact fees this way is not a very smart way to do it. And I'm curious, the school board, the school impact fee is extraordinary. Have they passed a resolution asking us to do this? Did, I mean, did they participate in the conversation? Were they at the table with a representative? And do we have some sort of formal recognition that they're requesting this?
They were very involved in the process. I believe we have a representative from the school district.
I'm Kristin Garrison. I'm Director of Planning for the school district. Yes, we did participate extensively from a technical standpoint. So our role was providing the data required for the methodology, and then reviewing the methodology used by the consultant to see whether we felt that it hit the mark in terms of impact fee standards. Our school board has not made any formal request for the impact fee increase. However, if this, if the county commission so desires, certainly take that message forward through our superintendent.
I would like some sort of formal recognition from the school district that they want this increase. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Baker, did you want to...
No.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want a little bit of explanation on the, on the public building. You had mentioned the, I guess, law enforcement. Can you go into that a little bit for me so I can understand?
So in some cases, law enforcement impact fees, a separate category than public buildings, also include the law enforcement buildings. In the case of Palm Beach County's public buildings, all of the sheriff, the buildings owned by the county but used by sheriff are also included in the public buildings, as well as the jails. So in some ca, you know, in other jurisdictions, sometimes they split those, and that's what makes it hard to compare one public's buildings' impact fee to another. It's what the makeup of it. Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess my follow-up question is, can somebody tell me kind of like, what was the rationale for including the law enforcement buildings into, like, I don't know when we made that decision, but I just want to get a little bit explanation?
When I was much younger, longer hair, dark, I served as the impact fee coordinator, and the second person to serve as it for the county. We included correct law enforcement structures in our public buildings because we were responsible for it. And so it was a part of all of our square footage that we are charged with, and that we project would be increased over the years based upon the number of calls, the number of arrests, et cetera, et cetera. So we've always included it as a part of our public buildings because if you single it out, for the most part, it is going to take you much longer to accumulate enough funding just for corrections in order to do the improvements that you need within a timely manner. If it is part of the overall buildings for the county, you've got enough discretion to move projects forward in a much more ready pace than just single them out. So that's why we've always included it, because the board is responsible for the square footage.
And just want to follow up, Mr. Mayor. Does that mean that, you know, are we properly funding sometimes the law enforcement side? I just don't know. You know, are we really funding that?
I think in your project list, there's sheriff buildings. Mr. McLellan can probably give you a better answer.
It is a part of the buildings. The actual law enforcement only reflects, like cars, the cost to outfit the deputy, just those type of costs. It does not include any building, per se.
And Mr. McLellan can elaborate?
Just to make sure, before you elaborate, because I'm looking on slide twenty, on the current adopted rate, it's, that's twenty-seven percent. So I just want to make sure that by combining it, we're not shortchanging on the law enforcement buildings.
Sure. Good afternoon. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Eric McLellan, Director FD, no strategic planning. Everything that's been said so far is completely accurate. What I would add is that our practice is typically to utilize the law enforcement impact fee towards law enforcement buildings. And at the same time, we sometimes use public building impact fees towards law enforcement buildings. I would say predominantly, law enforcement facilities have been the lion's share of our use of impact fees for public building purposes.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm having difficulty with this. Like Commissioner McKinley, I have a problem with using extraordinary circumstances so liberally. I think that, I think it's stunning that our legislators didn't put a definition of what an extraordinary circumstances is when they wrote this law. And I think that we are falling into a trap if we're going to just let ourselves say, "Well, it's expedient to call this extraordinary circumstances." I don't know what extraordinary circumstances are anymore. Is the heat that they have in the UK today extraordinary, or is this the way it's going to be forever? I don't see where we should be using extraordinary circumstances but for the fact that it then makes it easier for us to do calculations and sidestep the rest of this law. I'm having a lot of trouble taking this giant leap and making a finding that we have extraordinary circumstances here. I'm also having problems with any kind of conversation about increasing impact fees when we are, at the same time, talking about the fact that workforce housing and a lot of other issues on the table are impacting our residents, and now we're talking about adding more fees. So I am really having difficulty, and if this is going to need a two-thirds vote, I'm not going to be one of the people who's going to vote for it. Ms. Baker?
Just to make comment on the extraordinary circumstances. I think it gives us here locally a little more flexibility because our board has not always assessed all of our fees at ninety-five percent. We've actually phased fees in over the years. We have not necessarily updated and used the latest and greatest cost estimate. And as a result, we're behind as far as what we could be charging the new development to help offset the impact, as opposed to continuing to create a larger deficit between what it costs for new development versus what we're putting on the ground. And it, at some point, we do have to build these additional, the infrastructure, and so all of that we don't collect toward develop, from development, then that is on the rest of the taxpayers to make up that particular difference. So I think that is one of the reasons that we could utilize for extraordinary circumstances in order to make up that difference if the board desired it. If the board has no desire to increase fees, this would still be, allow us that flexibility because you may want to increase fees in one area and not another. But I do believe the fact that we are somewhat behind as far as what we assess in impact fees, that this gives the board the majority of flexibility. Just because you find in this manner does not mean you have to increase the fees at the later hearings we're going to be bringing to you to address nothing but the impact fees.
And my only problem with that argument, County Administrator, is you're making an argument for why it would make it easier for us, not why we have truly extraordinary circumstances. And that's what's giving me pause here. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Potter is in the audience, Mr. Ecclestone is in the audience. Anything you want to contribute in the thought process here? You were part of the process, maybe you could help us if you give us additional information that might not have been covered.
All right. Commissioner Marino, I'm going to hold them for a second. We do have one card. I'm going to ask the one card. If anybody else does want to speak, I'm going to ask you to fill out a card. So Katie, would you come on up?
I only have forty-five pages, don't worry.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, thank you for your time. I am KT Catlin. I am here representing Gold Coast Builders Association. The Gold Coast Builders Association, GCBA, has had the opportunity to review the county impact fee document prepared by its consultants, inclusively of using the provisions of one-sixty-three dot thirty-one eight oh one six G one, commonly referred to as extraordinary circumstances, as the basis of the proposed increase being presented to you this afternoon. The extraordinary circumstances reports being presented to you today was not presented at the Impact Fee Review Committee. In fact, the Impact Fee Review Committee and GCBA were informed at the last scheduled meeting on June tenth that the county staff was giving direction to its consultants to revise and update the impact fee conclusions to include extraordinary circumstances as the basis for the increases being presented to you. The draft report was posted on the county's website the week before last. We wish to state that GCBA has serious reservations about the technical validity of the report and several of its conclusions. In brief, we believe that the premise is flawed, the methodology is suspect, and the conclusions are unsupportable. We want to be clear, we do not categorically oppose an impact fee increase, just one that can be better defined and legally supported. GCBA has engaged technical and legal support to better identify and define the errors we believe exist in the proposed document. GCBA will be preparing a report, oops, and I just lost my page. And once that, with a rebuttal to this document for the Commissioners, to better define the choices which we believe that you can legally adopt as the basis of your fee. That document will be prepared and submitted before your next scheduled workshop in August. In case you're asking why, we're just hearing about this today. GCBA participated in the Impact Fee Review Committee meetings, with the last occurring on June tenth. Up until that meeting, GCBA was under the understanding that the staff would not recommend the utilization of extraordinary circumstances, except to justify an increase in the impact fees beyond the maximum fifty percent prescribed in the Florida state statute. By way of example, the proposed fee, if adopted, would increase the impact fee on an eight hundred and one to thirteen ninety-nine square foot, single-family house, from ten-thousand five hundred and forty-two to eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty, not, to eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six, an increase of seventy-nine percent. And for the same square foot, multifamily attached rental would go from nine thousand one hundred and eighty-one to sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine, an increase of eighty-five percent. The eight hundred to one thousand three hundred and ninety-nine square foot range is the range that most of the workforce housing units are being built.
I'm going to ask you to curtail your comments, and we will accept that presentation to receive and file.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes.
I think absent from this presentation by staff was exactly what she is presenting, and if it's okay, I'd actually like to hear her numbers.
Absolutely. Continue.
Thank you. Oh, okay. So, so the, as I said, that, that target of the eight hundred to the, just shy of fourteen-hundred square foot range is the range that most of the workforce housing units are being built. So we would ask that you would take into consideration the report that we will have We think that by way, that the impact fees, excuse me, I just got this out of order. So forgive me.
I knew we'd throw you off a little bit, so...
You did.
I'm sorry.
You did that on purpose. We know that the fees must be phased in over a four-year period of time if increased above twenty-five percent and less than fifty percent. The industry was informed at the six-ten meeting, as was the committee itself, that the county intended on recommending to you a fee increase above the fifty percent maximum utilizing extraordinary circumstances. We, we do hope that, that we participated in these meetings with the full understanding that there would be a fee increase. Unfortunately, when the county decided and notified the industry at the very last meeting that it intended to seek fees well in excess of those maximums and phasing periods established in Florida statute, we had no choice but to take issue with the recommendation before you today. So, thank you.
Any more questions for...
No, thank you. But I'd love a copy of that, with, at least with the comparison numbers of what's being charged today, what would be charged if the full increase went into effect.
If it's all right with you, I'll get that and have that sent over to you.
Thank you very much.
I think you go on and send it to all seven of us.
All of you? Okay.
Okay. We have two more cards that miraculously arrived.
Mr. Ecclestone, and then Michelle DePotter.
Mr. Ecclestone, thank you for your service on this committee, and we certainly are interested in hearing your perspective of this.
Yeah, you're welcome. And thank you for allowing us, allowing me to be here today. So we spent hours going through a lot of data to come up with the report that was delivered today by the consultant. And it represents fair numbers. How they get calculated is, you know, over the years, we have made recommendations, "Well, you should do fifty percent on this, phase it in over that." And recently, in the last couple of years, we realized that's a political decision, and really isn't a decision that the committee needs to recommend because, one, they never followed our recommendations. And two, it was, it was this that the Builders Association, AGC Realtors, would all come in and speak to you all and give you their opinions, because you guys are the final decision-makers. We're just recommending whether the report is accurate or not, and the data is accurate. And that is what I believe is our role. As far as this extraordinary circumstances, this is a new situation. There really isn't any data that the Impact Fee Committee could be sent back to go evaluate, should we do it, should we not do it. Mr. Moore had made the statement in the last meeting that staff has to say the extraordinary circumstances due to legal reasons, and that we need, it needs to be vetted. So it's not something that was challenged in the future that you didn't do, it wasn't discussed. And that's, you know, I'm not sure if that's where we are today with this discussion. But again, I, I believe, and other committee members, we've discussed that past our report being submitted to you is a political decision on how the numbers come out. So we, I don't think it's good to push this issue back to us. We did not discuss it, except very briefly in the last meeting. But I think it's something that should be discussed with, you know, going forward here in a, in a public environment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ecclestone. You certainly have clarified an issue for me. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Mr. Ecclestone, thank you. Could you come back up?
Sure.
I want to be sure that, and you're a well-respected member of Palm Beach County, of our business community.
Thank you.
And that the data that was submitted to the consultant, which was Tindall Oliver, and is now Benish, was true and correct as statistical data.
Yeah, it is the, the only department that we had to challenge, which, and I don't want to get pulled over for speeding or something, was law enforcement. They, they did not attend the meeting by, you know, by electronically or in person as every other department did. And they did not ask for monies, public building used their monies on a regular basis. So, but other than that, it's, it's, we went back and we, during the meetings, we've mentioned to the, to staff and to the consultant that we wanted this looked at or that looked at, and they came back at a following meeting with new data, so.
Just wanted to be sure there was no political overtones in the data.
Yeah, no, the...
That's submitted, or the, the results, the statistics that were submitted to us in this report.
Over the years, the county staff has been excellent in getting us data and attending the meetings and answering a lot of questions that we ask.
Thank you.
Get there. No more questions from Mr. Ecclestone. We'll take Ms. DePotter now.
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle DePotter, CEO, AGC 515 North Flagler Suite 910, your neighbor down the street. I didn't put a card in, I wasn't going to speak, but the AGC's name has been put out here a couple of times, so I just want to clarify some things. Commissioner McKinley, you have an excellent memory. I think you're speaking back to 2018, which would have been December 4th, I believe, when I stood up here the last time and said I wasn't engaged in this and I couldn't speak. I can't hardly say that today, but I can go back to Commissioner Bernard's request back in 2018, that the AGC, the Realtors, and somebody else be involved the next time around. Commissioner Valashay was here as well. I rewatched that today, it's at about the 44-minute mark there. So, we did not have a seat on the Impact Review Committee. There are some great people on there that I too respect, their expertise that have served, but we weren't part of that. In fact, I didn't learn about this until May 4th, two days before the second meeting, when a bunch of my general contractors started sending me an email, asking me had I seen it, that there was an impact meeting that was going to occur, there was a virtual opportunity. I actually was on vacation, and I dialed in virtually, and I did weigh in at the end of the meeting. Derek, you're correct about that, and what I weighed in about is that you had commented that it went out to 13,000 people, but I was one of nine people on the phone in that meeting. So, I've had to play catch-up. I was on vacation at the June meeting, so I missed the April meeting. Again, I was just the public engaging. If you don't send something out to the heads of organizations like the Realtors, perhaps Matthew Ledger, Deanna Bra, myself, or even the Economic Council, or some of the other people that have been engaged in the past, we don't know unless a member tells us about it. So, I really can't speak intelligently about what's gone on. Again, I'm bringing myself up to speed, but at the Business Forum meeting last Monday, I asked my colleagues there, Michelle Jacobs, Noel from the Chamber, and everybody else who participates on that, which is a subset of the Economic Council, and they didn't know that this workshop was occurring. So, here's the good news, we have time, well, depending on what your direction is here today, to engage, now, reengage the right people at the table. I represent developers and contractors alike, and there's a lot of other people that should be involved. Back in the day, well before the 2014 increase, I think that was the last year that impact fees were increased, we were all involved from the very beginning. So, I think we'd like to see that again. Again, I'm not up here complaining, I am just saying that there's a lot of time ahead to get everybody together and discuss this in a meaningful manner. I haven't been able to do that with my board, they haven't had time to go through this, and quite frankly, trying to get a bunch of contractors together to even attend some of those meetings on a Friday afternoon with two days' notice between 11:00 and 3:00 would be very challenging. But, thank you for your time today, thank you for acknowledging the AGC and our involvement in years past and us being a critical component.
Thank you, Ms. DePotter, but don't run away. I think Commissioner Kerner has a question.
Yes, when you watched the 2018 meeting, did we look a lot younger?
Yes.
Sure.
That was the right answer. That's the right answer, but here's the thing, I still look a lot older, year after year, so. But, anyway, we can all work together on this, I'm sure, to come up with a position. We don't have one right now, it's way too early. Thank you again.
Thank you, Michelle. Did you have any other questions, Commissioner?
Just some comments.
Okay, so Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do support re-engaging some of the different interest groups, but I do not support using the extraordinary circumstance. So, I know for me, it takes, if it's supposed to be two meetings, I will not show up to another meeting, because I don't believe, oh, I don't know if we can do a motion or something to...
I think we can have a consensus today, and certainly will let the staff know that we're not receptive to that. So, I think you've made your point, and I think I've made my point, and so, they still have five votes potentially for extraordinary circumstances. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Kerner, and then Commissioner Sax.
Well, if we only need two-thirds, then it's only 4.6 commissioners, so if someone's leaning a little bit, maybe, that would fly. So, you know, what I struggle with, and impact fees are not something that I deal with on a daily basis, what I struggle with is that, there's two issues. The first one is, the folks that are moving to Palm Beach County now, and that are buying the new homes, not universally, but for the most part, are not the demographic that are struggling to be able to afford in this county, and so what's happening is, those that have been here for a long time are being displaced from their current rentals and homes and aren't able to afford to live here, and what we're looking at is, how do we pay for the services down the line? And so, if we don't increase our impact fees, then we're going to have to make it up on the backs of our ad valorem taxpayers as well. And so, I think we should keep an open mind, particularly if we're not going to go with the route of extraordinary declaration, or whatever its technical term is. I do think we need to go into this exercise with the understanding that we're really talking about who's going to pay for these services and improvements in the future, and do we want to place that more on the backs of ad valorem taxpayers, or those that are purchasing new homes in the county? And the other issue that I think we should be briefed on a little bit more is, what is our authority to both offset or waive impact fees for workforce housing and affordable housing in the future? The second part is, you know, one of the things that I spoke about during the sheriff's budget is, and obviously I'm a huge supporter of law enforcement, but on the out-years of that budget, is a huge capital cost requirement, I think it's $100 million over the next five years, and almost none of that was captured in the current budget request for the sheriff's office, and so, it may be to our benefit if we're going to have the second meeting or workshop, or even if we don't, because we'll still have public hearings on impact fees, to invite the sheriff's office to come present, or at least participate, in how we could offset, basically like a collateral source set-off, where we can use those funds from impact fees from new development to offset the cost, the ad valorem cost of the out-year capital improvement plan that they have, which is very weighty, and obviously they need it. So, you know, if we have $100 million in capital improvements for the sheriff that we need to attack and fund, attack meaning we need to get it built for them, then we ought to look to how we can maximize those improvements from development that has not yet occurred.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized, and then Commissioner Marino.
I wasn't here in 2018, so I, but I'm sure that I wasn't that much younger. I have to say that the points made, starting with Commissioner McKinley, have been well-taken, and I think that these are issues that we need to know, we need to review, and before we can make a decision, or at least before I can make a decision. There are obviously players in this field of development in Palm Beach County that have not been heard yet, or have not reviewed, or have not been present, and they need to be, because impact fees, when it comes to housing developments, affect our builders and construction units and agencies and companies, and they certainly need to play a role in this. So, and the second thing, and in terms of whether we call it extraordinary or not, I think everything in this county is extraordinary. So, if this is a threshold we need to say to satisfy the legislature, but I'm making, I call it superlative, extraordinary, I don't care, as long as we meet the threshold, legal threshold set by the legislature. But, as for now, this has been a nice preliminary hearing, and I look forward to hearing from those groups whose decisions that we make today will impact, and before I can make any decision, that I need to hear from that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sax. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you, Mayor. I, when staff was in my office yesterday, and they know me, said I had no desire to have the extraordinary circumstance. I understand that it would be another tool in our toolbox, but we, you know, passing on any increase right now is tough. But, let's take into consideration, too, that in 2003, there were 16,000 residential units that were permitted, so this was affecting 16,000 buildings, and in 2021, it's less than 8,000. So, I understand that the impact might not be as broadly felt, but when you all were in my office yesterday, we were talking about the fact that those in the middle, those that were really going to be looking at maybe affordable housing or workforce housing, because that's where we're targeting our dollars right now, they were going to be affected the most. So, there, and I don't know, the legalese, I don't know the possibility of it, but there's got to be a different way to do this. Commissioner Kerner did talk about how we could do something for affordable housing, how we could offset those fees, but there has to be a different, a sliding scale, I don't know. All I'm saying is, my observation is, we can't have a 72% increase on an affordable housing unit. So, if this is the tool in our toolbox that does that, then I'm not for that. Do I see the fact that increases are necessary? I hate to say it, but yes, and happily, it's only on 7,000 units, but it's a tough pill for all of us to swallow, especially when, you know, the commission here was giving money back to the electorate by lowering the military, and I know you probably hate the expression that if we add, if we raise impact fees, then we're passing that on to the final purchaser of the property, and I know everybody's rolling their eyes out there, but the fact is, we are. The fact is, you're making, if you're going from, KT, I'm going to borrow your numbers, and I might get them wrong, but I think you said $10,000 to $18,000 roughly on a house between 800 and 1,400 square feet, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money on an affordable housing unit, and an affordable housing unit is going to be a unit that's in that square footage. So, we got to figure out a better plan, so if we're looking for two-thirds, I'm not part of the two-thirds that's saying yes. Did that help, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on the meetings, the Impact Fee Review Committee meetings that were discussed by those that came to speak at the podium, if I can quickly.
Yeah, in a second, the county administrator would like to say a word.
Mine's not on to what you're talking about. Currently, this board allows us to use half of our interest on impact fees to help offset the costs for workforce affordable housing impact fees. In addition to that, we also utilize CDBG funds in order to help pay for impact fees for eligible affordable housing units. And so, those are the two current pots of funding that we allow to be utilized to help offset. I, I'm going to venture to guess, in the last couple of years, the majority of housing, 75 or more percent, has been market rate. It has not been workforce affordable housing. And so, the legislature in recent years did create and craft waivers for affordable workforce housing. And so, if this board, in the past, we have not done it because it was just case law supporting, right, and not a statute that allowed us to waive. If that is the case, and this board wants to waive those fees, that is definitely something that, if it is for specifically workforce housing, not market rate housing, that is between those numbers and increasing, then the board can direct us to do so, we'll create a program, and we can work through that process. But, we've got dollars to help offset that negative impact to workforce housing, and if the board wants to add more, as I stated, you can give us directions to go create a waiver program. But, at the end of the day, every single unit has an impact. We've got to account for parks, fire rescue, libraries, schools, et cetera, and so somewhere, we're going to need to make up that difference. So, it is up to the board on, you know, the direction you want to give us, but there is a way to help offset that cost. When we waive it, and when we don't increase the fees, we don't see market rate units, the costs coming down. It is whatever the market will bear is what's being charged for those market rate units.
Thank you, and just to point out, I would say that extraordinary circumstances may not be dead, but it's on life support. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator Baker for sharing that, because that was something I've been asking about for a long time, was the ability to waive the impact fee for the affordable workforce housing, both from just a practical standpoint, but from, you know, an administrative standpoint, I mean, we would, the amount of time people have to apply for the program, staff has to work, review it, then make the recommendation, then they got to come back and then build the units, and then come in and apply for that, and then somebody else has to take it, do the work, and then eventually, the money gets released back to these people, and it's moving, it's moving money around, we're paying for a lot of administration, when we could just really simplify it and just do it upfront. So, I think that makes a lot of sense, and something I would be very supportive for if we could move that forward. The only other thing I just want to add is, the reason why we're sitting here, obviously, normally we would go through an impact fee review, you guys would bring it to us, but it's because of the legislature we're sitting here today. This was something that they have provided that we endeavor to do, so we are doing it, and I appreciate staff bringing it forward to have us fulfill the requirement of the state of Florida, and so, I look forward to the next workshop when we do this again.
Ryan Meyer, Assistant County Attorney. Just to be clear, when we talk about the two-thirds vote that's required, that's if we want to exceed any of the phase-in limits that the new statute has imposed on us, so that could be an increase above 50%, that could be the phase-in requirements of equal increments of up to four years, that could be the four-year requirement when we have to do our next impact fee study as provided by statute. So, it wouldn't be on the extraordinary circumstances, it would be on those phase-in limitations.
Right, and as was presented, the limit on the fees would be 12.5% per year, or 50% over the four years.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mr. Ecclestone, we don't usually do this, but we're going to give you a second bite at the apple.
Thank you, I'm not here to talk about extraordinary circumstances again, but during our Impact Fee Review Committee meetings, Mr. Moore had someone from the county come talk to us about a program that you all might not be aware of. So, the interest that's earned on the impact fees by zone is what can be used to support the impact fee for workforce housing. One of the issues that program has is that where the money is available isn't where the money is needed, and I don't know if there, we talked to them, the gentleman might forget his name, and Mr. Moore, is there a way around this, but there's lots of money out there where that's the interest on the impact fees that can be used to help support the impact fee for workforce housing, and I don't know how, you know, I don't know how you guys do it, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There are projects that have applied for it, some haven't gone through, some have used it, but from what we understood, it was in the wrong zone, and so, that's my thought, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and I guess that's part of the reason why we're going to two zones instead of four zones. Mr. Moore, did you want to make some clarification here?
Yes, just quickly, I wanted to make sure that the board is aware that, in terms of notice to the public, we had a list from planning, zoning, and billing of about 13 emails, and so, we've sent out notices to all of those, for each one of our meetings, we've sent those notices out. As we became aware of these organizations, Ms. DePotter's organization and Ms. Catlin's organization, I made sure personally that I emailed them and made them aware that the meetings were taking place, and that, so that they would have an opportunity to participate, and so, again, I just wanted to make the point that we made every effort possible that I was aware of, to make sure that those stakeholders were invited to participate in the meetings. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, as we began to wind down an Impact Fee Review Committee meeting, we came to the point where the committee was making their recommendations, and one of those, one of the conversations was about extraordinary circumstances and where... circumstances and where, where the rates, because some of the rates were above 50%, some of them were below 50%. And so as we had a conversation with the county attorney and with the consultant, we realized that in order to go over the 50%, you would have to do extraordinary circumstances. And so we had that conversation in that last meeting with the impact fee review committee. And they, they, based upon the conversations that they had with us, they agreed that it would be okay to go, go extraordinary circumstances, however, not for purposes of raising the fees above 50%. And so that is what is in their, in their recommendation. And that is why it's in the, that's why that conversation took place at the last meeting, because their role was focused on the process and making sure that the backup and that the process was a legitimate process, and that it was a clean process. And so that conversation about extraordinary circumstances didn't take place until the end, because that was not their focus.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, just a clarification. The impact fee zone reduction from four to two is only applicable to the Parks and Recreation.
Just, just Parks.
That's not across the board.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Thank you for clarifying.
Gave us a little heart failure over here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to clarify a couple things. One of the changes legislation made recently is that it gives the local government's ability to discount for affordable workforce housing without having to backfill from another revenue source. So that's way beyond. Then you don't have to worry about where the interest is collecting, where any, you can use the interest for regular facilities, just discount them. So that was a nice change. That goes all the way to 140% of median income. So that, just so you are aware. And then a couple other things on that. When the legislation say the fees need to be based on most recent and localized data, one of the more important components of it is that each land use is being charged for its impact in relation to others. So if a multifamily is generating half the trips of a single family, its rate should be half. So even if you don't increase any of the impact fees, you should correct that ratio based on most recent data, so you are not charging somebody unproportionally. So, so you can adopt a fee, say 80% of transportation fee, current fee, would be the, currently equals eight, for a single family, 80% of full fee. Then you would adopt the entire schedule at 80%. Now, because of some changes to the demand component, you have a land use like gas station, increase 150%. So when you do 80, they still go over 50. So there's those isolated cases that goes against maintaining the proportionality. And that's why we wanted to use the extraordinary circumstances, which is, in my mind, is extraordinary, because you have two legal issues conflicting each other. One says, don't pass it, but if you do that, you are ruining the proportionality. So that alone, I mean, we are trying to define this extraordinary. Everybody's extraordinary is different, but that's crazy. So I think that was the thought process, that so that you can comply with legality and set the rates at the rate you want, but still protect the proportionality. So just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any more substantive comments, but I did want to thank Mr. Ecclestone and Impact Fee Review Committee for your service to this county, for appearing here today, and for serving this board of county commissioners, and thus the county as a whole. I know that oftentimes, we, we ask our citizen servants, public servants to volunteer, and they, they take up that mantle, and we're appreciative. And oftentimes, they work very diligently and send us recommendations, and we depart from them, or we, we don't even come close to matching what their thought process was. I know that wasn't the case here, because I understand the context in which the, the review committee and what their charge was, was not to recommend the specific impact fees. But I can assure you that we, it serves as a great service to us as elected officials. And whether it's zoning, or it's Criminal Justice Commission, or it's impact fees, we digest, and we rely, and we appreciate the, the content and substance that you bring to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. We, I think we have gone through this subject, and with respect to our obligation, we will have a second workshop that will be scheduled to again discuss this. But I think staff recognizes, at this point, this body does not appear to be inclined to ratify a decision to call the extraordinary circumstances the situation we are in right now. So we'll not have a formal vote until a period, I guess, when is that scheduled for? Do we have a date yet?
8/3, August 30. And there's not really a need to vote on whether or not to do, to go for extraordinary circumstances. It will come in the form of when you vote on your, at the second hearing. If you decide to raise the fees beyond 50%, then your vote would have to be two-thirds majority. But there's no necessary requirement by the, by the law that you vote on whether or not you accept extraordinary circumstances.
All right. All right. I think I'm going to, before we adjourn, just allow anybody, yes, Vice Mayor?
So, so just to be clear, based on what you said, sir, if, so as we come to the point where we're going to vote on, on impact fee, any changes the impact fee program, if, if in fact, we were to decide that there was a proportionality difference between a gas station and a house that was greater than 50%, that in and of itself, by, it would take two-thirds of a vote, is what you're saying, it would take two-thirds of a vote to ident, to say that is in fact true, that it would be required of this body, and that is, by definition, an extraordinary circumstance.
And I believe you would.
Yes. So any increase above 50% for any of the land uses would require two-thirds of the vote. And, and even to be able to do that, we have to show that there are extraordinary circumstances. So the way so far, most jurisdictions handled, the jurisdictions that are seeing higher growth claimed extraordinary circumstances. Jurisdictions that wanted more flexibility claim extraordinary circumstances. More jurisdictions that are in the low-growth areas, they did not necessarily use that. They just stayed within the 50% limit at all land uses, none of them, none of the land uses increasing more than 50%. So yes, so you may pick a schedule where 90% of the land uses are increasing 20, but you have one outlier, because of new demand data, it shows that they are impacting more. So that gives you that flexibility.
Okay.
All right. Well, we will have a second workshop on this. Commissioner Sacks, you wanted to?
Yeah, I do. I want to be sure that, before we have the second workshop, that we receive the data that was not included in our consultant's data today, so that we can review them. I looked at the members of the committee, the impact fee committee, and they represent a good cross-section of the business community of this county. And I want to be sure, since many of these impact fees will necessarily have a, an impact, is exactly what they're supposed to do, an impact on development, I want to see what our business community has to say about it. So be sure, anyone here, or anyone who's listening, make sure you get the information into our very good staff director and, and members of the staff. And then, secondly, let's not forget that with all new development going on throughout the county, impact fees really encouraged development of our infrastructure before housing occurs. So it's important for everybody on this issue of impact fees. And again, I concur with Commissioner Kerner. Thank you so much. Did an excellent job, and the committee as well. Thank you.
Ms. Caitlin and Mr. Potter both have my email addresses, so they can send that information to me.
Very good. All right. Anybody up here have any final words? Commissioner McKinley?
Final words on this subject, or just final words in general?
Any words you'd like to utter?
Yes, actually, I do. Not on this subject, though. Thank you very much for your presentation today. Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for bringing this up at the late hour under this portion of the agenda, but it's a, it's a timely issue. I brought this to the attention of Mr. Duran and Ms. Baker a couple weeks ago. We have an employee who is by now 37 weeks pregnant. She came to the county from, to the county commission employment from the clerk's office, and then since learned that she, because she made that transition from the clerk's office to our jurisdiction, not only does she not qualify for paid parental leave, but she does not qualify for Family Medical Leave Act time off, so her job is not protected. I'm going to ask that we work with our constitutional officers, probably separate from the sheriff, because that's too big to, to bite, but at least the clerk's office, and the property appraiser, and the tax collector, where our employees might be taking what they think are promotional positions between agencies. And I want to make sure, particularly for the, the pregnant women, that they, they understand the implications of jumping from one division to the next division. And if there is a way for us to have some sort of agreement, mutual agreement with these other offices, to make sure that the women who are taking, that are offered an opportunity to provide more for their, their family by staying within the county umbrella, aren't penalized for taking those positions. She's 37 weeks pregnant, and there's no guarantee that when she's done with her maternity leave, that her job will even be protected. And I don't think that's fair or right. I mean, if they came from a private company, if they came from Bank of America and came over here, that's different. But when you're going from the clerk's office to a county commission division, I don't think that punishment should exist, and we need to figure out a way to work that.
County Administrator?
I have much sympathy and empathy. I'm a mother. However, there are laws that specifically segregates us from other constitutional officers. We fill out different forms. I immediately reached out to our HR staff, our legal folks, as well as Assistant County Administrator Reggie Duran, to say, what can we do? How can we help? But there are laws that we have to follow. You know, we, under the Board of County Commissioners, are separate constitutional officer, officers than their, for the clerk and all of the other constitutional officers. So IRS and everybody sees us in a separate light, and we fill out different forms. And so it is my understanding that the law does not allow us to do it. If there was a way to do it, we could. I, I can work with my, and will work with my director, wherever that person is going, so that we can ensure that she comes back to her job within a reasonable time period. But we cannot, they have to have, meet the requirements for FMLA. And the, in order to apply the parental leave, they have to have FMLA. And that's a federal law. And so we have to abide by those laws. I had major discussions to try to figure this out, but we got to follow the law. But as I stated, I will work with the department head to ensure when this person goes out, that we work to make sure that we can bring her back, when she, within a reasonable period of time.
Well, I get that the FMLA is a federal law, but the paid parental leave is not a federal law. And there is ways that we could probably tweak the, the PPM that we have on that. If, if there's, the possibility of trying to help out a pregnant woman would be much appreciated.
I hear you loud and clear, and we will attempt to do so, as long as this is within the guidelines and, and rules for federal, following federal rules.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing no further. Yes, Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you. I, I have an appointment to a commission, if I could do it at this time. And then I have also a request. And by the way, Commissioner McKinley, let's work together on this. Let's see what we can do to make sure that, I remember being a pregnant prosecutor, and there was no sick time available for pregnant prosecutors at that time. But let's see what we can do. Women work together on this, absolutely. I'd like to reappoint Julie, I got my glasses on, Julie Hermes-Castillo, to the Citizens' Committee on Airpoint, Airpoint, no.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard has seconded. He's, all in favor, or opposed, show it as approved, seven to zero.
And the other things, I'd like to direct staff to hire a consultant to review and report on the overall impact of additional homes west of 441 in South County. If you could do that, appreciate that.
I think we're going to not make that direction yet. Let's just, when we refer that to staff to review and ask them to come.
Come back, sure.
I mean, we're, we're crossing a line here. We, I mean, that, I'm, I'm having problems giving staff direction to hire a specific person. I think we're crossing a line. County Administrator, how would you like to respond to that request?
Just for clarification, are you, from my understanding, you want us to just go out and hire a consultant? You're not saying specifically which consultant?
No. Any consultant that staff deems would be appropriate.
Well, we would, we would put out an RFP, depending on the dollar value, either do an RFP, or we'd need to do three quotes, depending on the cost, if that is the board's direction. But I need the board's direction on if we're going to.
I'm having problems at this point in time, without more discussion, making that kind of direction. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would go to the ends of the earth to support any of my colleagues, to try to accomplish something that they want to achieve. But I, I just, I don't understand what the end goal is here, what issue.
Well, you know, if I may respond.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Thank you. A consultant, no matter who they are, gives a third-party opinion on an issue. And I think that whoever that third party could be, and I, I have no, as they say in the South, no dog in this fight, I don't care who it is, but I do need an independent review of how additional houses and development in my district is going to affect transportation, is going to affect the schools, is going to affect law enforcement. And I know you're shaking your head no, Mayor. You're, you're one of seven. It, and I will, I think that we have done this before in the past, as a board. There's no downside, because we're getting a third-party independent report and review. Never let it be said that under my watch, that we did not ask a consultant, independent consultant, to review something that will affect thousands of people in our county. There's no downside, none at all. So to be afraid to hear from, from independent third party would be, I think, would be not really proper in our professional, making a professional opinion on the development of, of, of any entity that will affect thousands of people in our county. So I don't see any downside on it. I think the upside is that it'll give us additional data. Very analogous to what we did today, is we had a consultant, we hired this consultant, and we also are going to collect more data. More data is never wrong. It is never wrong. It's information. And the information gives us the ability to make professional opinions. And since our professional opinions affect thousands of people, I think it's a worthwhile project to do.
Commissioner Kerner?
Are, are we being tasked or asked to develop west of 441?
Yes. Yes, we are, Commissioner.
I mean, beyond what's been presented to this board previously, are there other plans? Is that the board hasn't been briefed on?
Well, we're going to be deciding on development. And, you know, this could happen in any commissioner's district. It could be with regard to environmental impact. But not to entertain an independent review of an issue, no matter what it may be, and whoever's district. I would never want to say no. I would always want to get additional data, so that the decision and the vote that I would make is based on facts, and, and not on conjecture or lack of, of proper data.
You got my vote.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I don't understand the timing of this request, nor how the, the consultant could come in here and do the work in a timely manner, given pending requests before the board. So I don't really see the purpose of that. I also think that we have a tremendously talented professional staff that provides all of that analysis for us on every development proposal that comes before us. So to limit the request for a consultant to one particular targeted region of the county, I don't think that's a necessary way to spend tax dollars at this time. I think we let our professional staff do it. way to spend tax dollars at this time. I think we let our professional staff do it. And we also, if, we also have the benefit of having a paid membership in the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. And certainly that would be an independent third party review if we wanted to utilize those resources that we already pay a membership fee to be a part of.
I would certainly, if I may respond, Mayor, thank you, sir. I would certainly entertain having the Treasure Coast to be part of the search. And it would be up to staff to find some third party. I don't, I just don't see any downside to it. If a consultant doesn't have the time, just certainly let us know. But if they do, it's additional data and information that we would be able to use in order to make a professional opinion.
Okay. But the one request I'm sure that you're targeting is going to be before us in one month. And so Ms. Baker, can you put out an RFP for a consultant and hire a consultant and bring that consultant's job, their research to conclusion and present it before the board before August 31st?
It normally takes a much longer period of time in order to get that done.
Right. And I mean, so long as the caveat, if, if the board moves forward with that direction is that it can't be, we can't make any current development decisions that are before us contingent upon receipt of the consultant's report. I don't care how we move forward, but I just don't see the purpose of it right now. And we have a professional staff and a regional planning council that can do the work for us.
You know, Commissioner, I, I think your points are well taken. I respect your opinion. If there is, there's two parts of it. One is there's not enough time. Well, let's see if there isn't. We'll go forward on August 31st or September 15th or October, whatever the dates are, that we will have requests for development west of 441. It's not just the one on August 31st. But I need to know. I, I'd like additional data. If they don't have enough time for that, we'll go forward with what our, our, our requests are on that date. But it's not just for that development. And secondly, if, like I said, if they can't do it, they can't do it. We move forward. But in the meantime, there'll be other requests for that area. And I think can never say no to additional data. And I think if, if staff can, and Ms. Baker, if we could, we could ask staff for direction, you know, to give direction to staff to go ahead and do that, it would be helpful to us as, as, as arbiters of what goes on in this county, to have that additional data.
I'm having some real difficulties with this request because I don't think it's defined as what exactly we're trying to do. I think be careful what you ask for. Your consultant that we hire could say to us, you know what, the ag reserve doesn't make any sense anymore. We need to make a whole new valuation of how to develop the, the county. I'm not sure that this is something that at this, that this should be brought onto the agenda at the end of a workshop. I think that this is a much deeper subject that needs to have some staff time to analyze your request. And as Commissioner McKinley said, I'm not prepared to put off what's already in process while we wait for a report from a consultant.
We certainly will not put off anything. And you know, it's additional data, not the biblical data. Okay? It's just additional data. And, and if there's going to be development west of four, let's see what, what, how does it affect traffic and schools and EMS? And additional data never hurts.
With all due respect, Commissioner, the, the TPA gets data on, on transportation. The Treasure Coast Planning is working on data as far as a comprehensive plan for the region. We, we have meetings on the comprehensive plan and we make changes to that as staff makes presentations to us. I'm, I'm really having difficulty with the, the, the subject and, and the request. And I'm going to have to not support this. And if you would like to call for a vote, I think Commissioner Kerner is ready to give you a second. Or if you'd like to just hold this as a staff direction to review it, I'll leave it to you.
I think that at this point, after, particularly after the discussion today on impact fees and wanting more data, I never want it to be said that we could have had more data to review and digest before we make decisions on this board. So I move at this point, at the, right now, that we direct staff to review it and to see if an independent consultant would be helpful in having the Board of County Commissioners review whether and make a decision on development west of 441.
Just to clarify your, your motion, it is not to engage a consultant, but for staff to come back with a report on whether it would be appropriate and their, and their recommendation that we engage a consultant for this comprehensive review of land development west of the Turnpike.
No, sir. West of 441. I didn't say the Turnpike.
Well, your, your district starts at the Turnpike.
No, sir. My, I could have the clerk read it again, but let me, let me restate it. Motion to direct staff to retain a consultant, third party consultant, to give us additional information on development west of 441, west of 441, in terms of traffic, schools, infrastructure, EMS, law enforcement, and all the seven areas that we review before we approve development. That's my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner, would you like to give a second to that?
Yes, I would, Mayor. But in doing so, I certainly would never want to stand in the way of a fellow commissioner who wants more information. I think that should be the spirit of this board. Certainly, we will disagree on policy issues, but if someone wants more information, I got your back. The second thing is, you know, I know that there's a current issue regarding 441. And I don't think in any way this is going to come back before that vote occurs. Commissioner McKinley is correct. But I think that's a transmittal. And isn't there an opportunity for it to, to come back?
Yes.
Adoption, I guess? This isn't even initiation, isn't it?
We've initiated.
We've initiated. So it will come back to us.
So where you are timing wise with that, this item will be going to the Planning Commission on August 12th. Staff is finalizing the report as we speak. August 31st, this board will hear for the transmittal hearing. The board did initiate these amendments in February. If the board transmits in August, they would come back at the end of October. I don't have the exact date in front of me for potential adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments and the companion zoning applications as well. August 31st, transmittal, late October adoption, should the board transmit.
So, you know, in the, in the interim, if the report does come back, it may be helpful to other commissioners who had voted to transmit to have a broader and more informed view when it comes back for adoption. So in that regard, I think it would be very helpful. And then secondly, you know, the, the GL land swap, as it's called, aside, there, if it does pass, there will be other efforts to develop further west of 441. So I think it would be good to have that information for those attempts as well. So I second it.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner McKinley, your light's still on. Any more discussion? No? Okay. Give me a roll call.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
No, because I think this is something staff does every day.
Commissioner McKinley?
No, for the same reason.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinroth?
No.
Four, three.
Okay. Staff, you have your direction. Any other comments? Seeing no further comments, we're adjourned.